Because the first thing is doing in the end of April, I've heard. So that's when you see the big bump there, you see the big points in September, usually will take. A lot of people don't like it hanging over their head. I have employees intoxicated, they, as soon as they get their statement from Pierce County, whatever, they go pay to make it live. They don't like it hanging over their head for the rest of the year.
I pay mine either way.
Yeah, same. A lot of people do that.
Just to get it out, we got there anyway.
Yeah, well, more than that. Plus, we moved the whole system. We relocated the whole system, put it together. We used to have several of them housed in here, some housed at the, in the high school building. So we brought it all together. Our surveillance now is really, you know, just about everywhere we can get. We've got, we have eyes on, which is a good safety measure. So a couple of external cameras, which really come in handy. We didn't have a lot of external surveillance a handful of years ago. And now we have pretty good, certainly on our main entrances and exits. Crossover back and forth, the ag shop is an important place to, to have eyes on between the buildings. Third floor, we didn't have surveillance of the old buildings. So a little challenging to run through a variety of different areas of construction too. So we've got a pretty good guy who knows our, could be all the nukes we're heading into our facility. Cause we have them run all that. So we're about a hundred percent done with the rest of the animals. Some of the original ones had to be replaced. I don't know how long ago, maybe some of the first ones were put in, certainly before my time. The technology obviously has come a long way. So clarity of picture, zooming and all that business is all pretty good. So very good for safety. Our kids, for the most part, all know. It's part of the reason, you know, if anybody ever says, well, our students don't have locks on their book lockers. Well, they don't need them, then their kids know. But we can see every locker. We can see all the activity in practically every hallway. So it helps them to avoid making poor decisions. And then from time to time, I mean, we need to go see what happened and ask a kid about it. It makes the conversation go a little better.
Some of those are always recording?
Yes. I, I take that back, only if it senses activity. So, yeah.
Motion active. Any other questions? Not looking for a motion to accept or consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept or consent agenda.
Is that me?
I'll second that.
Move the second to accept or consent agenda. All those in the papers, aye?
Aye.
Hold this note. Motion here, six oh. Move on number eight, student presentation by Miss Slatch, art students.
Okay, sir, I'll, I'll stand over here, try and click through my slides here. So I have Miss Markie Albin with me today. She's one of my junior class art students that's currently taking art with me. But I want to just come in and chat with you guys a little bit about what's going on in the art department. Some changes that I'm actively making for our curriculum here at Plainview. And then talk about kind of my vision for the future moving forward. And some things I would love to eventually aspire or build to do with our program here with Plainview. So just first, my name is Mary Slatchak. There's sort of my credentials there. And I'll talk a little bit more about how I am a transitional certificate educator. That is new for you guys here at Plainview. But I have my bachelor's of fine arts and studio art. And I do have the title of an honors art scholar. So that's kind of an additional studying and sort of, it's sort of like a mini thesis that you can complete in undergraduate school. I have my master's of fine arts and sculpture from Kansas State University. And then I'm currently a transitional certificate educator through the University of Nebraska-Carney. And then I live in Pierce with my husband Cody. And my almost three, I'm, right now I'm saying going on sixteen year old daughter, Mamis. There's just some pictures of some of my sculpture work I've made. That's a, actually a painting I recently made that my students have been getting progress pictures of. As I've been completing it, I had never painted a horse before. I'd never drawn a horse before and painting something I, in my own art, have been trying to do this past year challenged myself because I've kind of told myself I wasn't a painter. Or it's kind of my area that I feel most maybe self-conscious in, so. But I am a transitional certificate educator. That's a newer program that's happening in all sorts of states. UNK has our leading program in Nebraska. What it is, is essentially an alternative pathway for anyone with a bachelor's degree or a master's degree to obtain their teaching certificate. So we still have to do the practices, exams and things that regular educators do. But it gives us sort of a different pathway so that we can obtain that education portion. So those classes in education, classroom behavior management, building curriculum, lesson plans, those types of things. So I've been doing that program, I think, I believe I started it in 2018 and did it here and there. Of course, I started a family in between there. And then I will complete my program at the end of May here. So I will be fully certified, just like any other teacher who's gone through a traditional K through twelve education program. So that's just a little bit about me, kind of about the transitional certificate program. This year, I always, I always want to have a theme for my art room every year. So this year, as I was coming into Plainview, my theme was art is for everyone. I think it's a very important thing to spread to our students. Because when you're working with K through twelve, obviously as we get into ninth through twelfth grade, they choose if they want to come to the art room and learn more. K through eight, they're kind of required to come see me. So just like how I didn't love math, it wasn't my favorite thing. I still had to come to school and put my best foot forward. There's going to be students of ours that don't love art. They don't see themselves being an artist and that's okay. There's, art is still a place for them. There's still a place for all of them. Wherever they feel they're great at art, they're not great at art, they love it, they don't like it. It is for everyone and every stage, phase and place they are. Art's great about meeting everyone where they're at. So that was my theme for this year. So that way I can just, it's right in my wall, it's a huge, it's pretty much the whole wall when coming to my art room. It says art is for everyone. So that's this year's theme and I kind of stand by with all of our students. Even when they're having tough days with their art or they're having great days with their art. So I brought Markie in just so she could chat with you guys. Cause she's taken a lot of art at Plainview. Obviously she's been here quite a while. So I brought her in so she could just chat with you guys. What she's feeling in our program right now, maybe some things that she's been doing that she didn't get to do before. And how she, how she's feeling about it. So Markie, if you'd like to share. No pressure.
So when I think of art, I think of, okay, it's a free class, no homework, right? Yeah, okay. Well, I think kind of previous years, we kind of just let that side go. We just like, didn't, I guess, learn. We were kind of there and we got to do whatever we wanted. Well, the beginning of my class with Miss Slatchak, first thing we did, we learned. So I was like, what am I coming into? What am I coming into? Well, honestly, I enjoyed it a lot. I got to learn about line textures, colors, all these things that I would not have learned about before. And I get to apply them into art now. So I'm learning all these cool new things. One cool thing that we did do was Indica ink. Who doesn't, that is, not me, still don't. Anyway, well, we just were painting with it and did some all this cool little art stuff. But it's like, art is for everyone. You can apply it through everything. Like I sometimes, what I apply it to is like stickers. When I was a little, I loved stickers. Who didn't like to put stickers on stuff? So that's what I think is that you could add anything to anything and make it your own. Like not everybody has to see it, we just see it a different way, it's a different person. No, I like what we're doing with the everything kind of right now. Right now we're doing our own projects. We've done sculptures and stuff like that. We did some paper mache, which I haven't seen us do in a year or two. So that was fun. Yeah, we do a lot of individual projects and we have to add different textures, lines and stuff like that. One of my favorite things that I like that she does is that she makes us self-assess after. And she kind of has us, you know, tell about how we feel about it and what we could do. She makes us feel, she makes me feel so confident in what I do with my art. Cause I can feel nervous about something and I can talk to her and she'll be like, yeah, but here's how we can fix it. So, yeah, that's all I got.
Yes, we do, we actually touch on our high school, even our elementary too. We do a lot of reflecting. That's a big portion of our standards, K through twelve, is reflecting, be able to speak about your art. But yes, my high school kids, my junior high, they're drawing on the floor and I'm like, okay, you're gonna write me a paragraph? And they're like, what? I can't, I'm, I'm gonna write? I'm like, yes, you're gonna always write in here. Whether about yourself or about someone else's art, it's important that they're using those skills of, you know, writing in other classes, but they're also learning how to connect, processing their creative way that they do. So, thank you, Markie. Here's my list of, when I was first coming into the program and talked to Darren, talked to Jen and Kyle about what our students have been doing. I kind of made my list and then this list kind of grew as I got to know our students, spoke to them. Got to chat with some of our parents at our first parent teacher conferences. And this was my short-term or immediate needs list that I made for our students. And mostly these are just focusing on our art standards. So having a greater focus and learning and understanding of the elements of our principles of art, this is something we incorporate into our classrooms at kindergarten level. And it's something they utilize heavily all the way up till twelfth grade standards. Exposure to more art materials. I mean, our students have been doing a lot of coloring, drawing, but they hadn't been necessarily experimenting with a lot of paint, three-dimensional work, or even combining those two things. Learning how to bridge between our things that we usually associate with working flat to also bringing that into working things that are three-dimensional. Of course, focusing on their ability to reflect, share, compose their thoughts about their creative process. And then of course, inclusion of art history and even just as important, inclusion of current art events. So things that are happening in art world right now. That they may not be hearing about, or maybe they're not finding it on their TikTok or wherever they're on the internet, some of our upper kids. But things that are happening in the art world, how the art world contributes to marketplace, dollars, jobs, all those types of things. And then of course, right now what I'm working on is creating our priority art standards. So most schools, a lot of my colleagues at other schools around here in our local area, we create a list of our priority standards for K through twelve. So those are our main standards that we absolutely have to hit. And then we explain how through art, whether that's materials or processes, that we focus and hone in on those priority standards. Our other short-term or immediate needed art is just, is some equipment. When I came in, I checked out our kiln, did some research on it. I got in touch with Dakota Potter Supply, which is in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. They're our nearest pottery supply and servicing place. And then I also touched base with some of my fellow art teachers at NPS and a couple of other schools that I know are very knowledgeable on kilns. So our kiln is, nothing wrong with it, it's just they no longer make this kiln anymore. I mean, it doesn't function, which is something that's wrong with it. But there's nothing wrong with the brand or the size necessarily. It's just that they don't make the parts for it anymore. And we can't move forward with it. It technically could fire manually right now, but that means there's no safety measures. It's pretty much like lighting a barrel and kind of hoping it works, which we definitely don't want to do. But the beauty of new kilns nowadays is they all have the same parts. So no matter what brand of kiln you buy, when you have to service parts, they're all the same now. They're all universal parts. But that is something we do need. Ours isn't functioning, can't, well, it can't function safely, I should say. So that is kind of on the docket of something we do need. As clay is one of the most important materials that K through twelve can get access to. It is our one art medium that students learn through feel, completely through feel and with their hands. It's our best way to build, especially our younger kids, their mobility in their hands. And using their fingers, connecting that to, again, they're learning through the feel of something. So that interprets how their feel, what something feels like interprets their next step in their process. The other thing that we are needing is a second power wheel. We do have one that functions, however, it's only for right-handed people. So many, many years ago, decades ago, essentially if you had a left-handed artist, you just forced them to learn right-handed. But that's not something we do anymore. And it's not conducive or helpful to them. It's just like someone who's left-handed, we wouldn't force them to learn to write right-handed just because we only have whatever for right-handed people. So new power wheels now, they actually just have a button that you click. If you're left-handed, you click the button and it spins the opposite way for you as versus someone who throws right-handed. So also again, I've been working with Dakota Potter Supply and getting some bids for kilns. They come in all ranges of sizes, shapes. Costs can range anywhere from two thousand dollars. I mean, if you're, they've got massive ones that, you know, we would never need ranging up to eight thousand dollars. They also work with schools as far as mixing clay, providing clay, which is heavy. It's usually a lot of volume. They make their own, they provide special bids for schools because obviously we use larger quantities. They also provide servicing. So if there breaks, they come fix it. And they also provide yearly inspections as well to make sure that our kiln is safe, it's working as it should, and it's not going to cause any issues for our students or us using it. So here's my kind of future vision. Here's my sort of future, but here's actually some of our seventh graders from fall. They made a Claus Olenberg inspired soft sculpture. So they had to pick an object. And a lot of them chose food. But they're just made entirely out of paper and they're pretty much stuffed, repainted to look like an object that they're choosing. I just want to give them a little shout out because they really enjoyed that project. But here's kind of my bullet points of my vision for the future. So one thing I want to do more heavily is integrating more design thinking. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a second here. Expanding our materials, especially for our high school kids. And then utilizing more technology, specifically digital art, making art digitally. Not necessarily graphic design or like fonts, but actually using digital tools to create images. And then community art as well. So things that we can give back to, thank you. So design thinking is, we do parts of this already, but we don't do the whole process K through twelve. Design thinking is incorporating more critical thinking into the art process. So following that sort of almost like scientific method of thinking. What that does is it helps us bridge the gap between art and any other discipline at school. It also helps us apply creative thinking beyond school. So that's where they come up with their asking questions, they're imagining, they're designing. They're creating prototypes. They're going back and starting projects and they might go back and hush for to revise those things. They make changes until they get to their final result that then they go share in different ways to other people or other facets of their learning, whether that may be connected to art or science or sports, however that may be. Expanding materials, this is definitely focused especially for high school, but even our elementary kids as well. Things like fibers, weaving, fabrics, felting, some more industrial products like carving, wood, foam, small metals, found objects. And then a big one that I'm a proponent of is mold making, casting. So using plaster, resonance, anything that we can cast or make replicas of things that students create. In the current art world, there is so much more going on than just paint and drawing. Artists use literally anything to make their art nowadays. And a lot of my high school students especially are coming across those things on the internet. They'll tell me all the time, oh my gosh, I saw someone make this out of this. I couldn't, I didn't even know you could do that. So there's way more materials out there that we can expose our students to, to better help with their creativity. And then integrating technology, digital art is on the rise. It's actually, for the first time in many decades, digital art is being displayed in museums. It's considered actual art, just as much as a painting that's hung on the wall next to it. So that would be utilizing digital programs, which some of these we already do have access to, like Adobe Suite. Procreate, along with possibly like tablets or stylus tools, things that we can use even on the screens of our Chromebooks to help create digital images. And then also helping our students utilize digital art to further support their design process. I currently as an artist myself, use digital tools all the time. Because it helps me work smarter, not harder. You know, if I'm trying to draw something on a larger scale or print something or change the image of something, I go do that digitally. And then I take that digital creation and apply it to my physical art that I'm making. So it really cuts down on the struggle so that we're not, you know, doing so much hands-on, making tiny lines all exactly the same to make us a grid that we can then trace or an image on. We can do that digitally and print something and then expand it. So just ways that we can integrate digital processes into making our physical art as well. And then last but not least, community art. I was very blessed to come from an art program in Spirit Lake, Iowa, that was very focused on giving back to our community. Through public artworks, here's an example, just some large ones that some of our students at my high school that I grew up and created for the community. But even small ones as well, within local businesses. So we would come together as a group and we would design artwork that we just gave back to the community. So whether that, I said, was large artworks, small ones to be put in local businesses, murals. One time we painted, repainted all these benches in the park. Did all sorts of things to involve students and the community. It helps our students get involved in a group design, a group project. A lot of times with art, it's always a solo mission. Anytime we can get our students to come together and make something for a bigger purpose is always an awesome, awesome thing to see. Also gives students gains, knowledge and experience applying for grants and funding. How do we get these big art pieces places? You know, they just don't appear. There's processes and presentations that we do to find funding for those things. And then again, it just provides students that opportunity to work together, not for themselves, but just for a bigger purpose to give back. So that would be, that's kind of my docket on my dream list later in life. I don't see us, Mr. Kement allowing me to take over his welding tools this year to make big things. Although I am a welder myself. But him and I have been chatting a lot about things that we can kind of already cross do between our two programs. So he seems okay so far, but we'll see once I get in there and start borrowing his stuff. But, but yeah, that's kind of what I put together for you guys. So you guys have any questions for me?
No, I think it's amazing.
Oh, thank you.
And creativity is very important, so people look outside the box and think.
Yes, that is actually, I have one of my seniors, I won't share his name, but he tells me all the time, he goes, you know, I'm not gonna do anything with this when I get out here. And I said, that's not true. I said, because every job that you will ever have in your life, I said, wants a creative thinker. And it doesn't matter what it is. I said, it could be anything. I said, they want someone that can think outside of the box. I want to set creative side of your brain. I said, because again, it helps you find different ways to approach your goals. How can you do something a little differently than someone else? And he goes, yeah, I guess that's true. And I said, it is. So, but yeah. Yeah, anything else, any other questions for you guys?
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you for asking, you guys. Thanks for letting me take your time.
I've been a test, my daughter does say that you're exposing me to lots of different things.
Yeah, sometimes, even today I got a, what am I doing? I was like, we're doing this. So yes, just this year's really good about just getting them to expose to a lot of different things. There's so many ways to make art and there's so much more that they can do just beyond drawing in front of them. So I'm excited to share all my knowledge. Thank you, guys. Good job.
All right, move on to number nine, public comment. Do you have anybody who wants to speak today?
Yes. Do you mind?
State your name. I've gotta read the public comment policy group.
Don't you say my name first, or you read that, or how's that work?
I'll read it first. We're now proportionated to the side of a public comment. Each person wishing to address the board would write a check out of the board president. Stand and state your name. Each person wishing to address the board will have five minutes and only one opportunity to do so. Please remember this is a meeting of Lady Public School Board of Education. This help in public and comments and conduct that are viewed as seen, became slanderous, threatening or hostile will not be tolerated. You would be further advised that there is no legal protection or comments that are made. Public comment is an opportunity for patrons to express their concern or support for school business. Public comment is not an opportunity for open dialogue with the board while in open session. Board members will not respond to questions or comments. Patrons are encouraged to follow board policy if they have a concern about personnel or school operations.
Thank you. Kristi Hallett. I am here today, spoke with Ashley Denninger about three weeks ago. She stopped me at the pharmacy and wanted to run something by me. Mentioned to me that she had spoke with the superintendent about a seminar that she wants to present at the high school on the twenty-first of March. What it boils down to is drug activity in the community. I'm not going to share her story, I'll let her do that. But I'll give you just a quick rundown of what, you know, very brief of what happened with the family member. Of course, murder in Nashville, Tennessee, I believe. Fentanyl overdose, somebody laced his drink, I believe. Something along those lines. I'll let her tell you guys that. What she came to me about was wondering if I would want to present anything that I have regarding the community and what we have here that pertains to any drug activity, anything that the kids, that aren't aware of. She wants to have a meeting at the, during the daytime, somewhere around two o'clock in the gymnasium for seven through twelve, I believe. She's gonna have two pharmacists come, two state patrol investigators. Diane Blair, I don't know if you're familiar with her. She, CHI Health, she puts a lot of seminars and webinars together regarding trends, drugs, any type of illicit activity, those kinds of things. And she asked if I would present and I told her I would. She mentioned that she wanted to have the community come to the high school in the evening time. But I think with, what she was, expressed to me was lack of participation would keep us from having it in the gym. So I think she's going to secure the library for this. I think it's important that teachers, school board members, parents and kids that can't attend this do come to this meeting because it's prominent here in the community. Two weeks ago, we took niagara methamphetamine off the street here in Plainview. So it's here. And I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but you guys need to be aware of what's going on in the community. Especially with our graduates, they're going to be heading out to the world. They need to know what's out there. We'll have more information probably in a couple of weeks regarding, you know, exactly what time they'll be here. They're going to be speaking in Lawson and I believe Osmond the morning of the twenty-first and then come over here in the afternoon on the twenty-first, evening time on the twenty-first, I believe, at the library. But we're hoping to get the gym. If we can't, that's fine. I've been putting it out there, I've talked with Brooke. He said he would do a little bit of advertising for us as well. I've been mentioning it to a lot of the parents and a lot of the businesses here in the town. Letting them know that we'll be out, we've got a lot of activity and you guys need to be aware of that. So that's what I've got.
Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome. Have you found fentanyl in our community? Yes. So Ashley Denninger is from Brighton. Actually, her husband was my neighbor growing up. And so the story of her family member is, it is actually quite scary. As girls, we're raised to always cover your drink, always be aware of your surroundings, stay together in a group. Now, he was a thirty-five-year-old male out with two other friends. And it became a triage situation when they were drunk and he died. He and I think the other one died, you'd have to ask Ashley. But he was thirty-five years old. Now, this is something that we need to educate our youth on and it's not just our girls anymore. Like it's boys too. This was a thirty-five-year-old man, drugged by someone, died in a restaurant. And it, he was a victim. So I appreciate you ladies doing this and putting this on for our community because when our kids leave here, they need to be safe. They need to be aware and it's not just our daughters anymore.
Any questions you guys have?
I have one question for the, for Dr. Earl probably, and maybe Kristi. But there's, isn't there some kind of pin that you're supposed to have with you to reverse an OD?
Narcan.
Do we have those in school?
We don't, we do.
Would you? That's what I want, I just want to make sure.
Part of Ashley's presentation, she brought this to me a month ago and I said, well, yep. Keep me informed, I'm, I'm working, you know, as we get closer and such. But, so yes, we as a school board, you'll, you'll have to pass a, a new policy to allow you to use a narcan in school availability, which is the antidote, so to speak.
It is, and you have to be eighteen. Anybody under eighteen can't, can't use it.
It's like an EpiPen.
Right.
Well, my brother-in-law's a state trooper and he's had to use several times on, when he arrested people. We don't, can't use it on. Well, my brother-in-law's a state trooper and he's had to use several times on, when you arrest people, you know, can't use it on somebody or you can't. You can't apply it unless you're 18.
Right, that's correct.
But you can use it on a 12-year-old.
What? Yeah, you can't, if you're 18, you can't, like if I were 18 and Dr., or was not 18 and Dr. Earl was suffering from this, I could not.
Give it to him.
Right. So.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's certainly, yeah, there's certainly firm eye education, yeah, that, that needs to happen beyond what, you know, just self-education. You know, kids curiously searching and, and, you know, reading certain things and maybe having personal stories being brought to them. But, but yeah, Ashley contacted me last month and I knew that she'd been, you know, working behind the scenes and waiting to determine what the details will be of that day for not just our students, but our community, so.
Two separate games?
Well, potentially, yeah.
As a school board member, I'd like to come to the one where the kids, to the kids who are in the front. Thank you for letting me have that here.
They may not want the parents there though, because they may not open up to kids to express themselves. They may not want the parents there to, you know, make them.
Will there be that discussion or like a Q and A?
Oh, yes.
That is a good point.
That will be a good opportunity for that.
I'll certainly keep you informed, probably have all the information you need before next month's meeting. I'll push it out before then, 21st.
March.
Any other public comments?
Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to question I have, number 10, our review board of education policy, number 601, continue to use those school facilities.
So we have a, a policy with regard to use of facility. We discussed this, I think, one other time, in fact, we've got a revision date in 2017, so I mean, it's been a while. I think it's your second or last policy in the district binder. So December 27th is the last time we had any discussion about charging for use of school facilities. And I seem to recall the last conversation quite simply, a board member said, hey, the folks pay tax dollars, you know, if it's reasonable, you know. And we're generally talking about gym use or the auditorium. So for example, Arts Council yesterday used the target gym for a community performance, so they're a nonprofit organization. We, we haven't ever charged that, you know, for, for using them, so. So, but it was brought to my attention maybe to kind of reconsider that part of it has to do with Dance Right performances that they have and charge admission for. So that would be a, a for-profit, maybe it's a little different than the Arts Council, but I guess I just wanted to bring it to your attention and just take direction from you on if there's anything that we need to do different. I certainly appreciate everything that Dance Right, you know, does for our community. It's a terrific business, it's great for our kids. But as a, as a profit-oriented, you know, business, you know, does that matter? Does that matter to you as a board? So when I went and looked at, at the policy, of course, it does say, you know, we're gonna charge X amount in custodial fee. We do have some expenses as a district. Bathrooms need to be cleaned up and prep, uh, prep a gym, clean up the gym and so on. So that was, I guess, maybe seen as a, you know, a contribution on the goodwill of the, of the school district. And so I, I don't know if, it, it probably needs to be maybe be brought back after you have maybe an opportunity to think about it for a month or take it, maybe input from any community members. I'm not advocating or advising anything, I just wanted you to be aware and to have you just maybe rethink if this policy, if the language of this policy is not being followed, is this policy necessary? Or should language be revised to follow really what, what our current practices and what you want to be moving forward?
I don't know about you guys, but I think that Dance Right should have to pay you enough, you know, I stand alone, but I, I have a daughter who dances. I know how much we pay for dance and how much it costs to get in for dance to go, it's definitely money.
Is this her last dance and we just came up?
Yeah, a little competition thing? Yeah, I get that, that one wasn't.
All that money went out.
I know, but when they have the big one at the end of the year, the TV deal, that, that's gotta bring in cheaper than you did, yeah, it's like tonight.
But we all saw how many, of course, gate money we bring in when she dances at halftime for parents, that wouldn't come, that would be money I bet.
Well, I was kind of thinking of that because that basketball game where the kids dance every halftime, okay. I personally really enjoyed it and I would not have watched otherwise. But there was parents that were bringing in quite a few children, they were paying at the door, then they were paying at the concession stand. And I think that the junior parents were serving food.
Grandparents.
And grandparents. I mean, so there was quite a bit, like I wish we had a way to track that, how much that brought in that night, but I definitely see what you're saying also.
Have we got chairs or any cleanup or setup?
We, we haven't. We, we haven't had anybody contract with, with a custodian or, nor have we charged them for what we determined to be a fair amount of hours and thus wage at district expense, so we, we haven't. You know, your page two of the policy does outline some specifics for you. And if, that, that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention because I, I don't really, if, if, if we have it in policy, we ought to follow it or do away with it or revise the language. And so I just maybe ask you to look at it next month, maybe put it back on the agenda as an action item to consider a language revision for this particular policy.
It'd be hard if everybody kind of just take time to really think about it, just like you.
I mean, I don't even care if somebody's using it for money as long as it's not costing the school or anything. But if the janitor deals with concerns, maybe they probably had an issue with the dance, maybe you end up sending over chairs and stuff. You didn't have a custody member wanting to do the work and I don't know what they're obligated to do or not have to do for someone on the outside. You know, if you force them to send the chairs and all that, is that something outside of your job description?
Yeah, we determine like when it needed to be done, so if, as the school district, we needed to use the facility till whatever time it was and then set up afterwards. If we're encroaching on, you know, six o'clock, seven o'clock at night or something like that and have an expectation that I need, you know, Gail to prepare the gym, that would probably be something out of line maybe. That, that would probably be a reasonable expectation that he should be compensated.
Right. I'm not sure for that. But I don't know, like you put that in the policy on what qualifies, what doesn't qualify.
Yeah.
So do you still, I think I need more than that, or is that what I have to tell them and then can they say no, you know, it's outside of your.
You could probably do a realization to help do it, if they can't do it themselves, you know, probably.
You need some guidance, right? I'm sure the parents would help in all ways that they could, but they would need some guidance.
Pretty hard to ask a parent to help clean up when the parent had to pay $10 or whatever it was to get in.
Oh.
That's my.
I think they would. Does Dean still have you guys clean up at the Plainview and invite the wrestlers?
Yep.
All the parents stay, all they clean. The janitors didn't have to do a thing.
Same goes with ball backers.
Yeah, I think parents would stay.
We make sure everything's clean, we'll, we'll clean bathrooms if needed.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not quite the standard that Jim Bruce has, but your best.
Yes, I know. Even the little kids invite all the parents home.
Yeah, I would say, you know, Jutten and her family are terrific. They are terrific people and they do a tremendous amount to prepare for whether it's the recital or the competition or whatever. I mean, so I certainly don't want to come across as, I don't think they're pulling their weight in the free loop. I'm not suggesting that in the least. I just want us to follow policy or revise policy.
Are you getting any additional input from Gail or Jim Bruce as to what they think?
Sure.
Because Gail is all the time. For how long it takes.
Yeah.
Not like, yeah, the amount of time it takes. Is Gail really the only one that can be brought? Gail's had a call, but the other guys basically have their job that they do and that's kind of it, but Gail has to pick up all this.
Yeah, but they work as a team, like pretty well.
Well, we'll come back to that next.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, board of L and L, 564166, participation in political.
Yeah, really, really, quite honestly, not a whole lot here. It is somewhat relevant, there were a discussion right here about, you know, school board members using their position or influence potentially and or facilities and there, you know, there's some legal cases, you know, that, that apply to this. And so, you know, there's not, quite honestly, again, a whole lot to it, but I didn't just want to skip over this. Just a couple of pages to bring to your attention.
I might take, I may take away from the city on the bit, the board member has, is right in free speech and the position of license, using school resources.
Yeah, that was, that was my take away, I'm entitled to my opinion, but I'm, I also need to encourage constituents to reach out and that school board members don't take, it's, there's, there's so much I can do in this room, but I can't campaign it in the gym or I can't campaign it anywhere on school grounds.
Any comments or anything on this, I mean, I used to get it with the lights on.
Both lights.
After last. I'm just gonna go through all that, review it, so I'm probably gonna do that. Now, we'll move on to the action items. I would pull an open that discuss the date of possible action for the education committees and only if I was, so we should have your packet, what I came up with for the board of committees. Hopefully, I tried to do was get everybody cataloged something that they had requested me on. Did keep, uh, the other committees, if we keep that together, we've recovered and threw that H back project last year. Would like to get that straight away, so we're pretty committed with that. So I did leave after seeing everybody else, uh, everybody's on five committees and everybody gets to work with somebody else. Everybody works with, you know, imagine a war on one committees. So it's a little okay, you guys, I would maintain a motion to accept those committee assignments.
I'll make a motion to accept the board, the assignments appointed by the president.
May we force that? Do you agree the second that you accept the board, the assignments appointed by the board? Vote, yeah.
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Self, yes. Yes. Right?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yeah.
Make motion carries except. All right, now we'll move on to number 13, discuss the date of possible action on the contract. Chris, Jim Hudson, in 23, what's your?
Is your nose better?
Write that information back. I have one question on your experience. Is that, what is, what I was, 19 or 21?
That is how long I've been teaching at Plainview, 19 years and 21 or how many years I've been in education.
In education. Is that the same for these other committees? Is that necessarily applicable to this?
Correct.
I have no problem with what you're asking. The only thing I would like to see going forward from, from both of you and Kyle is, I'd like to know how many students, you know, they're serving for, like, on the trip, because like to me, the number doesn't mean anything if like, if you're talking about school that has like half the students as other guys get paid, you know what I mean? That's just one thing I'd like to see.
Is that what they include on?
Yeah, I don't turn on that before, just, just, I didn't find it on that, unless I did see it.
What part of your job is harder or easier because of numbers, so I mean, you're probably still working with state law teachers, state law curriculum and all that, you might have disciplinary problems, but what other things would be a lighter load? Just because of your, is there a much difference?
Nothing jumps out at me off the top of my head. I mean, I think Kyle and I both kind of deal with the same day in, day out issues. It's just a matter of what level of needs and priorities they are in that specific day.
I guess what I mean, cost is, is it that much easier that you don't deserve the same pay because you've got other lessons to do? You know, six or eight to the, or, you know, you still go to the same level of work with someone that's got, you know, 20 kids in a class or someone that's got kids. I don't know if it makes that much difference.
Well, that way, I think you may, we should, we could be like Al and have one person for K through 12.
We could, we have.
I mean, I'm just, that's why I still have to beat the amount of kids, I like to know the cost first to, to visit.
And that's why I'm, I'm, I'm just.
All I know as a classroom teacher, if I had 22 kids one year and I had 18 the other, that didn't make a difference. You still prepare your classes, you have responsibilities, you have your standards to meet and same thing would go for any principal. You'd have to have all these things that doesn't matter if you have 20 kids or 10, you have responsibilities to the same that have to be met, so that's a hard question.
I have a question, but both of you, Kyle, I can stop you with your question. What are your goals? What would you like to see happen in the next year or just what are your goals for the next year?
I, I know we are very reading focused with our school goal and the needs that we need for our students, but it has always been a goal, even for me when I was a math teacher, just to provide more math opportunities for our students. So that's one thing that I'm really working hard on in our building is to be able to provide more math opportunities, better math services because we don't have math as an option with our title program. I would like to incorporate that in some fashion. So personally, that's where my focus is right now, is to provide more opportunities for our math students and even just working on improving our reading scores because that's always been a goal of ours and it doesn't just happen overnight. And I think with Kyle and I both kind of tag teaming this universally because we really feel like it's a K-12 goal that if we can work through this together, we can see more growth than what we are seeing by his building, my building kind of thing. And the other thing that I would probably say is just relationships. I feel like I am very personable with all of our kids and even our staff and that doesn't just happen in the classroom. It happens in the community as well. And so I spend a lot of my time, lunch, recess, those opportunities where I can interact with kids, so just building that relationship. You're very visible. That's important. I think you're doing a great job, Jen.
I might have asked you last year, if like your gym anymore, what do I would do to, I run two years ago, sort of responsibilities.
Um, I wouldn't say a lot more, I just think that I learned how to be more efficient with some of the things that I am doing. There are challenging tasks with the job, but it's not anything that scares me or intimidates me in any way. So I just think it's important to be proactive and have a good positive attitude about it.
I hope you guys remember, you loved it last year. You had to prepare.
I have no problem with my, I'll go on to use it, so. First word I feel like you need to keep, even though it's like, you know. Being one of the rooms. I know you gave up years last year, I guess we thank you, but I don't know the parents, thank you. But I don't know if that's something since everyone's scared of you that there's something you can add to next year that's better. Or that you have, like you did, so you don't have. We also have to look down the road when we start looking into the other salary increases too, you have to give one bigger raise, the other one's gonna. Your budget right now is, is pretty tight. If we could, I'd love to be the all, the super rate, but I don't expect a lot of that, which we have to look at.
Things have to be a little, a little tighter and I need to nip it over $1,000 here, but because I'd rather spend it on people than other things. I think it's a good place to put it. It's sort of, I've been a little tighter this year and used to share a few discerners, I do that even.
I'm sure, Kyle would take the same raise, I'm sure. I don't know what you're asking.
Jen and I have had this conversation and I've told her multiple times that, and this probably isn't my place, but I think she's underpaid and I have no issue with her doing bigger raises. I don't hold personal beef against anybody, so I told her to do what she thought was fair and I have no issue with what she wants, so.
Looked like you guys can go lower in respect from there on the overall big principal salary. So we can save some of that, a little bit of adjustment. On up to other principals in the area too. What's her experience as a, as a major here? In a way, she's definitely put her time. Putting around just eighty-five thousand, she's still.
She's still at the lowest.
She's still.
She's the third, uh, longest experience.
Right.
But we'll count what, what those, all those, uh, years give for the raises that she made. Yep. When we did, when we looked at, uh, three percent every year.
Yeah, it's like six.
Well, six in a quarter.
Yeah.
I think I say it every year, yep, the employees, I keep them. I have no, we can go on, five thousand dollar raise.
I think it's really important that you keep somebody that's, their kids and raise. But a lot of times she's up here before and after her hours and I've been there where it wasn't that way. So I appreciate somebody that has a love for kids and is going to put the extra. Cause teaching is not from eight to four, administration's not from eight to four, and these two show that. We don't want to lose them.
I want coaches to, I know they, I do a little something to each coach you deal with.
They do.
That's why, um, your load should probably be in about an hour, you have a little bit of.
Okay, we'll pass. Not, so we'll make.
I'll make motions. I'll make a motion that we approve the contract terms for Mrs. Hudson for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four school year test present.
I'll second that. We'll move to second, just through this class's request, salary request for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Is that enough detail as I asked?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put in the minutes, a specific amount and the percentage.
I just did as presented, is that right?
If that's presented, I, I just, they're.
Right. What's, what do you want me to add?
I'll just add the amount, doesn't matter, just percentage or.
So I'll make a new motion to set, no, that we approve the contract terms for Mrs. Hudson with a five thousand dollar raise for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four school years present. Is that, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
We just seconded to accept this, uh, this class's salary pool of five thousand dollars. For discussion. Uh, will vote, Chance?
Yes.
Self?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Make motion to approve six of them. We all want a free garbage.
Clear your dad's motion.
That's why he's smiling.
All right, well, we move on to number fourteen, I bought, uh, contract terms for this contract, twenty-three, twenty-four.
So in the past, as a board member, when you had an administrator in high school that's been here longer than an elementary, how did you want to keep things the same? Are you talking about percentage raises then? Or, like, you want to be, keep it even for them? Like in the past years when there would be a, uh, an administrative year that was longer than another one? How did you do that? By percentages?
If you're what?
By percentages?
Yeah.
Or?
Percentage of their salary up there, so she would, yeah. Cause if you don't, if you do it by Alamo, they're actually coming closer together.
Yes.
At your time.
Yes.
Where you want to keep that spread, if one is, and that one's.
More experienced.
Or, or, you know, school owner, whatever.
But in, like, your teachers, that, that doesn't make a difference, you know, some.
It does on their experience, it's over.
Yeah, but it gets frozen off really quick. So like, more teachers make more than I did before, I mean, many did be, when I retired, and I was okay with that. That's what I'm saying there.
Teachers could also get more schooling if they choose to and you have to pay them for that schooling, because it's a, uh, or administrators, you don't have to pay them.
Right, right.
Well, the three thousand dollar raise, you probably could be in that, be in the bottom edge, bottom end of the half, the lower half.
It's actually, uh, the average too, for what Kyle had calculated, the hundred thousand, one eighty-one, is actually on the low side, if you take out all the ones that aren't just seven, twelve, cause you got these single ones that are also K through twelve, if that makes sense? You take that out, you re-average it, it ups the, it ups the average up to like a hundred thousand, six percent. Trying to make it look better for you. Kyle, what are your goals?
Michael's?
You had time to think about it, you didn't.
Oh, I know the big goal when I came here was to incorporate technology, the one-on-one was a big thing. Um, and then the seniors, giving them experience outside of school. And right now, the big one that I'm going through is, uh, updating resources for our kids. We did the new VLA's, um, resources, we've done new math resources. And we're looking at science and trying to get everything as up to date as possible. Cleaning out the chemical room and doing some of that stuff, just trying to get those things done. Those are the big ones, but increasing our test, test scores and giving our kids the resources they need to improve their scores as much as we can. And trying to help kids be successful, that's the biggest one.
Still wanting to be athletic, Derek?
Sure.
Is, yeah, is that considered, is that in your salary or is that two different?
No, so.
Last one, did it last year?
Last year, um, I believe I was six thousand a year before than, or was it six, two years ago? And I asked for two thousand more, so it was eight thousand for AD. And that's what it was last year. I can't remember if it was the year before too. That's for all.
Yeah, yeah, you went from six to eight from year one to year two, and then eight.
Yeah. So then that would be in addition on top of that, as well as coaching, like you brought up too. So.
Now, we could stay at eight for that next year for.
Looks like, oh shit, is it exactly what it's that coaching stuff, I'm saying? We talk about an AD, is that all that goes?
He, he's the question.
Pressing the D sound. Just for extra duties, so.
But that would include that, like, for your salary too, when they fit that, that's not part of this.
AD isn't a part of this.
Yeah.
AD and football, additional setting.
I don't think we need repeaters on the whole, kind of, this. All right, go ahead and go over anything.
No, she guys think we need to up it his increase, cause he's only like three percent. I know we just talked about that, but.
Which one is going to five? And our budget's tight, but they didn't take a raise last year.
It would go to five, forty-six, forty-seven.
Cause they didn't take a raise last year.
But that also wasn't the intent for us to come back and be.
That's why I, I appreciate that.
So.
We all know that. Cause I think we tried to convince you to get one. And Chance worked hard on the last two to convince you.
I would take it.
Yeah, he could try to convince you hard.
Well, I, I need, Mr. Schmidt's happy with three thousand, I would make a motion to. Accept his terms of three thousand dollar increase for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Paul, second that? We move to second, to accept three thousand dollar raise for Mr. Schmidt for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Self, yes, Mike?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Make motion period six. All right, move on to number fifteen, thank you guys for.
Thank you.
Yes.
I did great job for the last time. Number fifteen, discuss the date of possible action on recruiting football uniforms. Should I talk about?
Um, so like I said, I've gone through and asked kids and right now we're sitting on the bubble of about thirty-one kids going out. Um, and I have twenty-nine uniforms for them, so I was looking into getting different ones. Problem with the old ones, I can't get the same uniform anymore because they're out of style. Um, so the company I went and got a quote from, they make the same uniform, so essentially I could have that same uniform for fifteen years and just replace ones that get ruined or whatever it is, cause they don't go out of style. Or they can always make them year in and year out. Um, and I can do it cheaper. I went with a name brand uniform, like Nike, Adidas, they give about a hundred and fifty dollars a piece. Where these uniforms, I can get two of them for the price of one of those. So with this, it was about, I could get two tops in a pant for about two hundred dollars a kid. Uh, the quote you have has forty kids, I can take that down to thirty-five and that would knock a thousand dollars off of it. And then there's an additional eight hundred in there, uh, but the football team would cover that because that's their personal jerseys that they get to keep after they go. So the kids buy those and keep those. So that extra eight hundred on top of it would be paid back from the football program.
I was gonna ask if they still, cause not as soon as we had five jerseys, you know, pay for them and be on the back.
Yep.
The only thing I'm upset about is we didn't have any cool jerseys like this when I was in class. We had like those retarded ones with the big sleeves, you know, everybody else had the nice, cool, tight ones.
This isn't regular schedule.
It's off by about two years. Cause I wanna go about six years, um, before you update uniforms and this would be year five on the football uniforms. Yeah.
About helmets.
So I have twenty-five helmets right now and I'm going through sizing kids and I'm just gonna buy exactly what I need size-wise to get through that. Um, if everybody stays out like they say they're going to and you always have three, five kids that don't, um, we'll be at thirty-eight then the following year, if everybody stays out, keep them nice, so. And if that's the case, I can order three jerseys to get us where we need to and it'd be another two, four, six hundred bucks. Then next year I would have to pay just to get jerseys for those kids.
You said one, two, three, uh, I don't know. What about the junior high, is too big for two thousand junior high or?
Yeah.
So it is true, so what?
Now, you can, I mean, if kids want to buy their old uniforms, I'm sure we'll get selling.
Cause then my nephew, my grandson, on the slave queue, they bought, he bought, he's the same as hell with himself.
And the pants we have used previously for games, those are practice pants, they're, so that way we just keep cycling through those.
You know, I bought my jeans, you know, like, the, the white ones. You were beautiful, so it's your idea.
The tops would be too big. That's what comes out, they're way too big.
And the helmet thing, you pretty much have to wait till you major people, because you're always gonna, you're gonna have to have kids the same size, man, all the time.
Yeah.
I think a liar might have a struggle another one, so you hear, it's so big.
Totally, you're two years old, justice, for fifteen years.
And what's next year's that up? We better use that material like more than. Or that company goes bankrupt.
That's the only one question, the company go, but they've been around, cause this is the company that actually made Nike before Nike broke off and went on their own, and did themselves, so. Um, but, I like Randy, Randy's a salesman, though, they'll tell you everything. But yeah, that was the main thing is, if I get one uniform, we're going to year three or year four. Like, right now, I wouldn't be able to replace that, where in theory, this one, I should be able to replace them.
And you, what's your plan on one, maybe six years, how is?
I'll probably try and go longer.
So, I mean, it's not like it's not for twenty, twenty-five years and they've gotta stay in business to replace me. You get seventy years out of it, you're changing it more, so. So this, buying their own, that eight hundred dollars, that's something? You know, we got in trouble with the budget to run that stuff through the school, we don't budget for it. Is that something that's called into that same category that?
Yeah, it's a pretty small amount, like I said, it would show as a general fund, or a general fund expenditure.
Right.
Uh, even though the kids are gonna reimburse us back and shows us an expenditure, you're not gonna, a revenue that comes from kids. Probably not enough to make a difference, but you never know.
No, but you do that, that amount during the year.
It is, it is part of the same scenario, yeah.
That, when the kids are buying it back for twenty dollars, we're buying that there's a percent that we see, right?
Yeah.
So basically, it's cool, you pay plus, that's after that.
No, so since, that was part of the deal that he gave us, so since we were buying two tops in a pant, he is going to give us that other jersey at a discounted price.
Okay.
And then there's also, we're gonna throw in a few jackets and stuff for apparel as well.
Do we need coaches?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, kids' staff instructions, like.
Always your head. What is the total number requested to do forty?
So if you do forty, it was eighty-eight hundred, if you do thirty-five, it's seventy-eight hundred. That would be the ultimate one that the kids buy.
Uh-oh.
So the boys wanted to do that last year, um, and some of the heat press stuff that they used last year started coming off. So this company said they would remake that uniform. And so then each year, we, we just have to find enough for them and we can use that uniform.
So you're gonna have three tops this year?
Yeah, they'll go home, away, in the black one neighborhood for hunting and then, uh. Yes, and then it would have gone into, uh, the playoffs, right?
Yeah.
You can't, you just keep you, uh, one of these other ones and then scratch the, the alternate? You know, give them cheaper, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
I guess I personally don't, I think in high school, I don't know, I think that we need an alternate jersey.
I try to conceive what he would do, cause maybe he'll give us the two, I think you'd be, uh, more likely to get a deal on the pants, where you would get the two tops and then get a pant for free. So I can go back to him and say that, and see what we can get. Cause I have no issue with that either.
Cause the kids are buying the black one, they're gonna buy that jersey.
Yeah, it's just the discount that we're getting instead of getting it on a school button. Or getting it on a personal one. So I get what he's saying.
So we save us a little bit on.
He was telling, get all three, they just put the discount back up.
No, I don't think we, I personally don't think we should get all three.
It would just be if we bought a third one, then we'd go back to the football.
Well, you save all the, we're playing some schools class, we can play, you want me to do football?
Do one.
Do one.
And this comes down with the activity fund?
Yep.
But that would make it more expensive, if kids buy their, if they don't, they'll have to, I don't know, second, if we're, we're across the wall, we still want to buy them.
Which, I have a combination, could I do?
Yeah, cause if the kids, kids are serious about playing before, they're not gonna care if they do, if they buy two bucks, so they can cost all the money. Buy it for your home. Very funny, you're, there. There's one, both companies.
Uh, if you have multiple kids anyway, from a family, like, me, right? You can tell them, they're gonna have to pay for two old jerseys. You have an opinion that you don't think you need all three, but kids want them, he's gonna order them for them. It increases the cost by a bit.
That's an option. Does the kid have?
It's not really a real thing, but responding to families, it's a two hundred and forty-five bucks, kind of like, you're curious, if the kids want to have them. You take that discount. So they'd cost more.
For the family.
Didn't, you put the all, didn't, didn't have jerseys, technically didn't, didn't have a discount on the line.
You're not, does that just say that's not even an option?
So.
Maybe the bigger question's forty or thirty-five.
Yeah.
Forty, thirty-five. Thirty-five is an option.
I, I mean, if everybody stays out or whatever and we have to order a few more, that's part of the good, I mean, good part of this situation is I can just order three more and then they'll be exact replicas. Um, because there's a, what is it, they guarantee to have them in in six weeks, so. Next spring, if I know I'd be five.
To your, to your point, you're saying that the kids absolutely want this third jersey?
Yes.
Because like right now, we're at the part where we're switching out the old jerseys, so it doesn't matter if the freshmen, sophomores, juniors this year have jerseys on.
What I'm, what I'm seeing right now is that the board's opinion, whether or not those kids need to have a third jersey on, so if they want it, they'll probably get it in a way.
So how did we decide back when they started doing the third jersey, I guess, because we didn't have that back in the day?
That was a.
Kids wanted it?
We started it, that was the year Dean got sick and they wanted to do something special, so we did it on that night when we played Creighton and he came back. And that was the first time we did it, then last year they wanted to have one and so the boys ended up just, I think the football program paid for half of it and the boys basically got to have it, so. But yeah, I get it, third uniform, it's not a necessity and I can figure it out on the.
I guess my, my only opinion is, is, uh, I've heard people on the board complain about the greenhouse, what it's costing a month. But yeah, we have no problem buying extra jerseys to wear twice a year. Maybe, maybe they win state, which would be great, they wear them like four times without having to game during playoffs or state. So.
Not black ones. In my opinion, the traditional ones.
I am too, I agree, I think if we're red and white, we're not red, white, black.
They, they look, they look good and I, you know, I haven't, I, I let Mr. Schmidt know and I say, like, yeah, I trust your judgment, you know? So you can bring whatever proposal you want to the boards, but if we've got a black jersey, I wouldn't want to see it worn very often. But I'm not the head football coach of the age.
Which I have no issue, if you want to take that out and just do red and white, and then I can see if I can get a deal on the pant, I'm fine with that too. I just wanted to bring it all forward so you know.
Not gonna cause, not gonna cause a problem waiting a month or something like that to get it ordered right now.
If I don't get them ordered by March, they can't guarantee the discount for one of the other. Meaning like if we did, if I, which I know they'll probably give us a deal if we do the two tops and then give us a deal on the pant. In order for us to get some form of discount, we'd have to have them ordered by March. If that makes sense.
So it's gonna be cheaper than your bid that you were giving, correct? So could we make a motion that he orders the red and white jerseys with a limit of, so does he have that now by March?
Thirty-five. Order the thirty-five.
And then have a limit?
They already set a dollar amount?
Like your eight thousand five hundred would be the limit, but we know it's gonna be cheaper because it's one less jersey. But it would not exceed that?
Yep.
I don't know.
Yeah, I would think we could do something like that. Why not? I guess I hope I, I know that three jerseys are necessary either, but if it's just to do that, and ask where the coaches stand.
Especially if they're paying for the third jersey. But they're, they're.
As soon as they're taking the case, though. On the paper.
How long did you say the case, you got the jersey, did he? So when Veer camp this summer, and you know exactly how many of them there are, and you have the kids and you tell them, oh, if you're gonna have to buy this, or you're gonna have to pay for half of it, or whatever, what do kids want to do? You still have it by first game. Could you go that route?
Put it up on the parents of all backers or whatever, something along those lines. I like that idea a lot better.
Because there's just a lot of quarters that we have to cut. And I think that if you ordered what you need now, and just take a toll with the kids, because is it May and you have your first, or in June? No, it's June, you have your first camp, right? Yeah, talk to your kids then and see what they want to do.
And then I'll be talking to them throughout the whole spring, so.
But you know, the, the second camp and let them all decide for you. Well, like your seniors decide, however you decide to approach it with the kids. But just go from there, because if you ordered it, if you did it right after then, if you sent it out to all the parents and, and you're gonna have to tell the kids, it's all or nothing. Like, half of you aren't doing it, half of you are. The kids all or nothing, we're gonna take a vote, this is what we're gonna do, or see if they even want to do it. I'm sure that they will, because it has their name on it and school and everything.
They, they don't put the name on the back of the long jerseys anymore?
No. Which is in our favor, they can be used again.
Yeah, but we had to buy those. We, it was essentially this, we had to buy the long jersey.
You've been on a school for almost twenty years, old man.
No, I'm just saying. So the question, do we do red, whites, thirty-five or forty?
Well, if you can order one, you don't have to be thirty-five.
Why you number five, that might still on the shelf for six years and still on the one. And then you evaluate the black jerseys.
You can just, don't worry about those on the school side of things. That can just be something for me to figure out later as a football coach speaking separately.
Do the kids still sell those little, uh, card valises or not?
We haven't done that for a couple of years.
So we really don't have a dollar about it.
I don't know. Uh, but if you went with thirty-five and took the black out of it, it would, it would be seven thousand on the court that he gave us. And that's, yeah. So that's without a discount, so it would come in under seven thousand percent, which I could know by the end of today, probably, what he could do for the discount.
I don't know, if I just make a motion, buy thirty-five of the uniforms. But just say, don't worry, it's seven thousand. I'll second that.
Thanks, moving second in to purchase thirty-five, but why even, no more than seven thousand. For discussion. Now, we'll vote. Mike?
Yes.
Wyatt?
No.
Melissa?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Motion carries five. And just, on the record, I'm too, the whole week has that bike. So, that was good for eighty-five. Okay, well, we'll move on to number seventeen, if you'd be directed.
All right. Um, conference speech was last week, uh, we had wrestling and basketball. All conference events are done now. Uh, district wrestling was last weekend, we had seven qualified for state. Um, so that's taking place, they're taking off here on Wednesday, we'll have a send-off for them at three o'clock. Um, on Wednesday and then they're gonna practice and head down after that. Uh, girls sub district starts in Niobrara tomorrow night, boys subs start next week. Uh, those brackets come out tomorrow, I just got a notification today. Um, and then again, here in March, March eighth, we are hosting district speech. Um, all of those entries are due today, so I had to go with that. Um, I know Deb, you said you liked having the schedule, so I tried something new, instead of putting everything on there, there's, um, barcode or QR codes that you can do. All right, you just hover your phone over it and they'll pull up our website, they're in the schedule, and the bottom one is to download the app on your phone, so.
I'll, I'll be there. Can you go to Tim, check me out for Tim? Just download an app. I know. I know, we're in traffic.
Maybe, maybe the two of us are next to each other, we can get through this.
Okay, um, two things on our principal report that I wanted to point your attention to. Um, the Ames Web Plus is a program that we were looking into. Uh, we actually use Acadians right now and that is a K eight screener that we use for reading. Um, this Ames Web Plus is essentially the same thing, but it includes math. So, um, a handful of teachers and myself are kind of going to explore this program this semester and see if it can meet the same needs and more for us. So if you hear us talk more about Ames Web, that's what we're talking about, is that it's screener and intervention tool for us. Um, the other thing that I have on here is playgrounds. Your picture is actually, uh, black and white, but I just wanted to show you, I just got these today. Um, this is like the blown up version of the proposal that I sent you. Yep, thank you. Um, and this is just the same thing, front and back view. So my question, I guess essentially to you, is based on the quote that we've received for a hundred thirty thousand, do we want to run with this? And have this installation happen this summer? Or do we want to reconsider another contribution to the project? We do not have any freestanding pieces on here and she did give me a couple options that, uh, we expressed interest in. So that would be something that if you put additional funds towards this, next budget cycle, we would hold off. To add those freestanding pieces and the surface itself. So, um, I just want to pose to you what your thoughts are about what this looks like, the future of the playground itself. Um, and would you be willing to put forth any more towards this project, or do we go with what you see?
I'm not being rude, but the kids that started the fundraising, better be able to play on it before they're grown. But how old are those kids already, are they in elementary yet, sixth grade? When you first started fundraising for this, how old, who the oldest was?
We started this last year and I said then that we would raise funds for two years and then figure out an answer to what we would install. So based on the money we've raised and what you've put forth towards this, this is all the farther we can go unless you're willing to put more towards it. And then it'd be installed next winter, springish.
In my honest opinion, again, I'm not being rude, but the Fed raises the interest rate again, so it's at ninety-five percent. The inflation is, it's pretty bad, gas prices, things are gas. I think it's probably about capped out for some reason. That's my opinion, that's, maybe that's not a fact, but I do know, but I've heard of some people that are like, this is a lot. When are our kids gonna play on this? So in my opinion, I think you should go with what you can pay for today.
Okay, and that's what I'm proposing to the board is where your position is on this. Uh, we do have one more event that will happen this spring to contribute to our funds. And after that, that is our two-year cycle that we had talked about working for. So if that's where you guys are at with this, then we will move forward with this particular plan and knowing that we have the hundred thousand dollars that you gave towards this project.
Is that similar size to what we have? You know, is this weird?
Um, it's stretched out a little more, but we gave them the same space essentially of what, uh, what an equipment is.
What's the surface for, so, is it wood chips?
It is wood chips.
How often do you have to, you mean, chip it?
Yearly, it has to be, it's maintained in a yearly basis.
So how much additional cost would it be just two of those rubber ones?
Um, it's almost equivalent to the structures itself. I mean, when I asked about it initially, she told me that it would cost almost a hundred thousand dollars by the time you put in the structure and the surface. What?
I gotta pile on them, you know?
Yeah, I know. And I've, I've been at a couple different playgrounds where they have like the pebble sized tires versus the chumped tires. And even the chumped tires are just as messy as our wood chips. I mean, it was scattered all over the place, so I don't know that you'd really save much on the maintenance of it.
You almost need to be like the Cadillac, where you have like a surface like track.
Mm-hmm. And that's what, that's what I had her quote me, I did, I wanted the best of the best when we talked about this.
That was a hundred thousand?
Correct.
Can you, uh, are those the only colors it comes in?
What's wrong with those colors?
They're our school color, I mean, I'm being big.
Um, that's a good question for me to ask, I don't know that, I, this is just the quote.
They're all gonna fade in the sun, the same.
And actually, this is just the backside, I mean, it's the front and backside view.
You know, if it could be added up, I think, we have stuff that you can add on to this.
Yes, so she gave me half a dozen freestanding structures that we could easily add on. That was what I was, um, proposing, if you were willing to put more funds towards the project. So yes, they could probably be added at any time.
So, so Jen's fundraising over the past year was never designed to even come close to funding this, as you know, it's mostly just an awareness thing, right? And it worked, right, because the board decided it was worthy to contribute a hundred thousand dollars in this budget cycle, uh, towards its soul. Um, yeah, so I asked Mrs. Hudson, I said, let, let's don't pull the trigger on anything yet because, you know, you could, you know, potentially fund, uh, the permanent rubberized surface. You know, but yes, but you're gonna, you're gonna delay the project. And, you know, that, that's the nature of those things, but, uh, but the awareness that Mrs. Hudson has put into this and our JPP organization, of course, the, the, the bake sale nickels and dimes. Um, just keeps it on the radar and keeps the conversation going, and so that's what's, what really helps to make the difference. If you're ever over in Elkhorn Valley, look at theirs, well, how much was theirs, Jen?
Um, at that time, yeah.
Hundreds of thousands, but that was part of their whole bond issue. Color-coded for them, looks very nice, rubberized surface sprawling, but that was part of their massive bond issue. Uh, so that they were hitting, sneak that, uh, actually they didn't sneak it, but include that in the construction of the school.
What about the rubber knives? Do you exactly, you can pad it later too?
Yeah.
When the chips are wore out, you just, I mean, it went out there and spread the rubber out?
Yeah.
Maybe we have building grounds meat, budget meat, and see what plays. Let, let things look at it, and maybe if we do something that's significant, we add it.
We're pretty lucky, we have space out there, we also have used us in city playground facilities, so it's not like this is our only option for kids, so. Um, so we, we are in a, in a good shape with regards to that, but the current structure we have, well, some people would say it's unsafe, it's, it's just, it's just outdated. Needs to be retired.
Um, this quote is ninety days.
To have them start construction?
Mm-hmm. Well, just to order it and then we would be on their books for the summer installation.
Okay. Maybe here it's be done?
Yes, I asked her if we accepted this bid, would it be installed this summer?
So I would think we threw a couple of years of this budget, you know, this H-back and stuff, remodel stuff made up, we're gonna start pulling the other way together. Just right now, we just had another one.
I don't think we can ask them to donate more.
No.
It's a school's playground, so we should be considering, maybe right now isn't the problem.
And like I said, we, our fundraising efforts will come to an end this school year. So whether we decide to accept this bid or put it off, we won't be publicizing playground to the extreme that we have the last two years.
We, thank you for doing that, I appreciate your minutes.
Thanks.
Do we need to, can we wish on this?
Yeah, my, I was just proposing the idea of what you want me to do next, essentially.
I like the idea that we could add to it.
Just learn the slots, they're available. We have options.
So we, so we're basically, we, we need to make a motion over to go forward and have.
Well, the money's already, you've already approved it.
Yeah, so we need to, to say.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, um.
As long as they don't leave the hundred thousand or.
Yeah, yeah, the, the money's been budgeted, so if Jen feels she has your feedback, uh, we'll go ahead and move forward. I'm surprised that they would guarantee us summer installation, they must have it in the warehouse. I'm surprised that they would guarantee us some installation, they must have it in the warehouse.
Well, she, I think it was a six-week delivery.
Yeah, I think that's right.
So, and are you gonna do it in school colors and? I will ask that question.
I don't want you to be mad.
I just think it's a little nicer.
I think it'll be mine.
I will ask that question.